Welcome to the Vacaville City Council District 6 Candidates Forum. I will be your host. My name is Julie Hartford and I am Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Solano County. Tonight, we have, so far, three of the four candidates for District 6, from District 6, who are here to present their views for Vacaville's future. Leslie Batson will be our candidate forum moderator this evening. Before we begin, I would like to tell you a little bit about the League of Women Voters of Solano County and explain the format of the evening and the rules. First, the League of Women Voters of Solano County does not support nor oppose any political party or candidate. The purpose of candidate forums is to allow voters an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues face-to-face, to stimulate public interest in the campaign, and to provide the candidates an opportunity to engage with their constituents. Tonight, we have three candidates from District 6. There are four candidates, and we have had a positive RSVP from each of the four candidates. However, Raymond Beatty had an emergency. He does volunteer work, and he is doing something else right now, and hopefully he will join us. If he does join us, he will just have to enter where he enters. But we only have allowed verified candidates to be part of this forum. This evening is a forum, not a debate. The difference is that in a forum, the candidates will be asked the exact same question. They will not speak to each other, but rather, they will speak to you, the audience. We have asked the candidates not to refer to one another, but to focus on what they will bring to the position of city council member. There will be no follow-up questions. Sarah Chapman will be our timer. And the candidates will be given three minutes for their opening statements and two minutes to answer questions. The candidates do not need to feel like they need to use up all the time given to them. The order in which the candidates will get their opening and closing statements has been decided through a drawing, and after their opening statements, they will be given the questions in an alternating order. Following the questions, the candidates will be given three minutes for closing statements. During this time, they will be asked to give you, the audience, a way to contact them should they have further questions, or should you have further questions. This candidate forum is being held as a Zoom meeting. Additionally, it is being broadcast on YouTube Live and recorded. If you are on YouTube Live right now, thank you for joining us, and please feel free to put questions for the candidates into the chat box. Questions submitted during the forum will be screened and sorted for appropriateness, relevancy, and redundancy. Similar questions may be consolidated. Questions of a personal or inflammatory nature will be discarded. You should be aware, if you are on YouTube watching this, the candidates cannot see you or your questions. If you have feedback or suggestions for the League of Women Voters of Solano County regarding any of our forum candidate, or any of our candidate forums, we encourage you to email us. You can find our email address on our website, along with a lot of other valuable information. The views expressed this evening by the candidates are theirs and not the views of the League of Women Voters. The recording of this forum will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Solano County's YouTube channel. Additionally, there will be links to all our recorded forums on our website. The copyright for this forum belongs to the League of Women Voters of Solano County, which reserves all rights to the recording of this forum. No portion of the contents of this forum may be reproduced or otherwise used without prior written consent from the League of Women Voters. No portion of this recording may be used to promote one candidate or to oppose another in any way. Additionally, no portion of this forum may be used to imply that the League of Women Voters endorses any candidate. If the recording of this forum is to be used, it must be used in its entirety. That means from beginning to end. Now, let's get started. I would like to introduce our moderator, Leslie Batson. The League of Women Voters of Solano County has a policy that moderators should not be constituents of the candidates who are speaking at a forum. Leslie is a Fairfield resident and has been gracious enough to be our moderator this evening. See, we've given her no formal training and very little notice. The League is pleased to have her here tonight as our moderator. All right, Leslie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, well, welcome, candidates. And when you're called upon to speak, make sure that you unmute yourselves so that everyone can hear. We're going to begin with the opening statements, and each candidate has three minutes to speak. And you don't have to use the entire time, but that you do have a full three minutes. And the order of speaking has already been determined by a random draw. The first speaker will be Jeanette Wiley. The second speaker will be Topak Chastain, and the third, Thomas Randall. So, Jeanette Wiley, if you would like to share with us an opening statement of three minutes.
Hello, I'm Jeanette Wiley, candidate for city council from Vacaville for District 6. I am running to be the voice for South Vacaville. I have lived in this area for 29 years, after moving from Missouri in 1991, and the whole time, I have lived in this south part of Vacaville. I feel like the residents of South Vacaville need to have a voice on city council, and I am really glad that we have gone to districts with our city council representation. I feel like that will be very helpful for South Vacaville residents to be heard. It's important for me, for city government, to be open, transparent, and responsive to the citizens. Our District 6 is south of Alamo and east of Peabody, which is the same as the Travis School Board, School District. And I was a Travis teacher for 22 years. I had taught in Missouri previous to that. And so, a lot of people know me from my time in the classroom at Cambridge and Foxborough. In addition to being the teacher, I was also the president of the teachers' union. So, I worked closely with teachers across the district and the school board and negotiations and contracts for eight years. I am also the president of my church congregation, and that's Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church, and I am on the Democratic Central Committee. So, I feel like I have a lot of leadership skills that would be helpful on the city council. I also have a history of working with a lot of stakeholders, and so I can work collegially. Even though I'm District 6, I would work with the whole city to do what's best for Vacaville. I've talked with residents in District 6, both in some small listening-on-the-lawn sessions and going door-to-door, and I know that people want to have a full-service city with more than just more houses and more traffic in South Vacaville. We are in the part of town that's growing, and we have got a lot of new districts coming in. I feel like our district needs to be fiscally sound, and we need to deal with our unfunded liabilities. I do have a broad range of support from elected officials, people in the neighborhood, teachers, and community groups, labor groups, and volunteers. I really want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing this forum tonight so that you, the voter, can see and hear from the candidates who would represent you, because you hopefully will utilize your voice to vote when we have our absentee or in-person voting. So, thank you very much, Jeanette Wiley, city council candidate.
Thank you. And now, our next speaker will be Topak Chastain. You have three minutes to make an opening statement.
My thank you. Can you verify that you can hear me? Thumbs up? Can you hear me? Excellent. So, my name is Topak Chastain. I'm running for City of Vacaville City Council, District 6. I worked for the city for 29 years. I worked in the water department, sewer department, street department. I worked for the parks department. I worked for the central stores. I worked in the, for the central garage. I was the courier for a period of time. After that, I went to work in the IT department. In the IT department, I worked as the city manager and in the finance department. I know every aspect of this city. I know it thoroughly. I know it well. I know what's going on with the streets. People are complaining around town right now about the streets and the overlay issues. I know what's wrong with it. I know who to contact, and then I know their boss. I know how much it's costing and how much it doesn't need to cost you. I don't want to just hear the voice of Vacaville. And I don't want to just be the voice for Vacaville. I want to actually put it in, put into effect, action in Vacaville. Vacaville, right now, last night, if you listen to city council meeting, Vacavilleans were calling in with issues, and they were just getting brushed to the side and not actually having any response at all. That won't happen when you allow me to be City of Vacaville councilperson. We will actually provide you an answer to the questions that you have. Jeanette, you are great, and you have so much to provide the community, as does Mr. Randall, as does Mr. Beatty. But I'm telling you right now, 29 years of sitting in meetings with individuals and seeing what works and what doesn't work is what sets me aside from the other candidates. I can tell you what's wrong, and I can see what's wrong before it even happens, and that's another thing I bring to the city council. I have solutions to these problems that don't cost anybody any money. Instead, they save people money long-term. Elderberry beetles and elderberry bushes. When last night, here's some horrible things that Mrs. Brecken brought up last night to the city, to the city manager. How come, how come we build these houses out in South Town here in Robert's Ranch, and we don't have school for them? And the city manager pointed at the city attorney. The city attorney pointed at the city manager. Nobody answered her question. Disgusting. Rather than pointing fingers, what the city, the city council needs to do is the ownership of the collaboration that they need, that they need to take place. There's a city manager's box, and they need to put the city manager's task. That's what I'll do for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we're going to hear from Thomas Randall. And Thomas, if you want to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
I'm on the left. Can you hear me on the right?
Oh, okay, okay. So, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Thomas Randall, and I'm running for city council in District 6. And in these uncertain times, my, my expertise and bringing what I have in Vacaville is, I've said that eight years in the military, so I'm a veteran, four years Army, four years Air Force. I've been with the Department of Corrections, so I got the law enforcement side of it, which is, which I've spent 13 years. All this, now my volunteer job is president of Fairfield County Association. I volunteered, I volunteered for that. I was the president there. I was the board of directors for the Vacaville Museum. I am currently with the Airport Land Use Commission, which I was here for two years and just got off a chair. And I'm with the, these are things that are current right now. I am with the Air Mobility Command Civic Leader, which has served under four-star general, being the lead down officer between the base and civilian. And I'm on the TRAS, Regional Armed Forces Committee, and I, I'm, you know, sunrise warrior, so I'm on the rotary club. With all this volunteers that I've been doing, which has been for the last, like, 15 years, I feel I'm self-positioned to serve at city council. But one of the most important parts of myself is I'm a business owner. I own two businesses. Right now, I've owned them at least a minimum of 20 years. So, going through the, through uncertain times is one of my strong points. And my business has been, I've been going through COVID-19 and through the times before then, when we were having the real estate problem. I, I right now know how budgets go, how budgets don't go, when you need to negotiate, when you don't need to negotiate. I know that a business is hard to run, i.e., city council, city, is hard to run without building a background on a ladder and people negotiating, and we, all of us getting along. If we can't do that, our city will fall apart. So, I'm bringing that diversity where I feel that I could bring everybody to the table, and we could talk about a situation, and we could move forward. I.e., my motto is moving Vacaville forward. I also plan on you, going towards the general plan where we need to improve on land use, our transportation, our conservation, our parking wreck, our public facilities, and services, safety, and our noise. All those things I promise to bring to the table as I.
Thank you, thank you. I want to introduce our timekeeper for the forum, and that is Sarah Chapman, and thank you very much, Sarah. We didn't mean to overlook you in the introductions. You play a really vital role. Thanks again. So, now we've come to the part of the forum where I will be asking some prepared questions, and they do cover a breadth of territory. You will have two minutes maximum to respond to the question, and we're going to have the speakers in a rotating order. So, because Topak Chastain spoke second in the opening statement, he will be speaking first, and then we will have Thomas Randall, and then Jeanette Wiley. And then, with the next question, we will again rotate the order of response. So, this first question is, I'd like, well, it's actually not a, it is a question, but it's part of a statement. I'd like you to share your top two or three priorities, if you are in fact elected to represent District 6 in Vacaville. And so, let's begin with Topak Chastain. You have two minutes.
That question, Topak Chastain for District 6, City of Vacaville Council. One of the top priorities that Vacaville has right now, besides civil liberty issues, which is huge, besides questions about the elected officials and their validity, which is huge, Vacaville is a whole, it's bankrupting. And when they went bankrupt, they lost 25% of their public safety. Crime rose, the value houses went down, they're still recovering today. Right now, if you listen to the economic development, the economic development director, the resume attorney that has consultants that they hire, which is just sad in itself, which is part of the unfunded liability issues, they're banking on bringing in biotech into Vacaville, and they're really focusing on that. And as Mr. Sullivan has mentioned several times in many council meetings, he'd like them to expedite health for the district and town, and now they're feeling, whereas the revenue is. So, anyway, so the business is getting a feeling, and so, somebody out here talked about it, the Albers talk about leaving town. They're, they're second largest biotech company here. They're talking about leaving Vacaville. Genentech is the largest, but we're putting over eight to one basket. And what happened to Valeo was they reached the housing bubble, and they went into bankruptcy. It's not going to take months to send Vacaville into bankruptcy. So, really, we talk about fiscal responsibility. Besides fiscal responsibility, what we need to also do is to be looking at what we are doing right now to help the businesses that are struggling right now, as Mr. Randall is well aware. Thank you for your time, and that's my answer.
Okay. For future reference, I was having trouble hearing your entire response, and so, if you could, on your future questions, make sure that the phone is very near your mouth.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you. If you can just keep it consistent, you'll get your message across.
I'll be letting you know.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next responder will be Thomas Randall, and do you want me to repeat the question?
No, you just wanted to know the two things that concern you most in Vacaville.
Exactly.
Correct. Okay. My first and foremost is supporting small businesses. I think right now, in uncertain times, the small businesses are common and they're growing. They're more growing than common, and they're suffering a lot because of the COVID, of course, and everything's trying to go back to business as usual. But as we set up, I want to make it more, we, right now, the city's doing great things on getting loans and grants available to small businesses and leaning towards small businesses. That, that all works, and that's all good. Okay, now, we got to work on getting the people back out to the businesses, because people were scared to come out to businesses because of the COVID. So, that's one thing I want to try to go out of the box, outside the box, and with the city to help us get to that point. The next one is more geared toward my neighborhood, which is District 6, and that's safety and reliability for the infrastructure. On Vanden Road, there's a place where it's really dangerous, where the people go out in the middle of the street to go around, because there's no sidewalks. We got buildings there, we got new housing there, but we have no sidewalk. So, working with the Vacaville Public Works, I want to be able to get our community back on track, because we have a very active community, which means we have a very healthy community. And we want to keep it that way, and we, again, like Jeanette mentioned, we want to be a full-service community. And I think I'm going to, I want to work towards that to be one of my parts. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have our third responder, Jeanette Wiley. Do you need me to repeat the question?
List two priorities we're looking for the city, I believe.
All right. District 6.
In District 6. So, for District 6 to be successful, and I think the whole city needs to be, and so, one of my priorities would be to look at the budget and work toward having a balanced budget, because the grand jury report did talk about an unfunded liability, and it just, the city has made progress toward trying to deal with it, but that is still an issue that we need to address. And I feel like before we can get the parks that we need and other things, we have to look at how the money's being spent. So, dealing with the unfunded liability is a big issue. We need to have a balanced budget and set our priorities on what we need for our city. Currently, we are spending about $3 million more than we're taking in, and you can't continue to do that and have a successful city. So, we need to take a good look at all the costs, and where can there be any changes done with the least amount of change to, we wouldn't want to change any services. And along with that, we need to look at a revenue stream, so we have more money coming in, and we need to look at the amount of fees and taxes that homeowners pay, particularly new homeowners on their property taxes. That in South Town, the fees are really high, and they escalate 3% each year, and these are special fees like Melrose and these CFDs, and they really add up for the homeowners in District 6. So, we want to have fiscal health, and it can't just be from the citizens. That's why we need another revenue stream. In order to meet Vacaville's goals of ensuring public safety, strengthening the local economy, protecting the quality of life, and maintaining efficient and effective services, we need to have fiscal health.
Okay, thank you, all three. Now, we're moving on to another question, and a lot of the questions I'm going to be asked, asking are kind of issue-focused. And the first one is going to be dealing with racism, policing, and diversity. So, the order of responders will be Thomas Randall, Jeanette Wiley, and then Topak Chastain. If I mess it up, you just kind of let me know. All right. So, the question is, racial equity in law enforcement has become a concern across the country. Do you feel that this is an issue in Vacaville? How would, if so, how would you address it? And how would you work to bring diverse groups together to build a more unified Vacaville? Mr. Randall?
Thomas Randall. My way of, yes, the answer to the question, yes, I think systemic racism is here, also in Vacaville, not only in America, but also in Vacaville, but is not, not repairable in Vacaville. In other words, we can move forward together, because it's not to the extent that of skating. So, the way to do this is, we have to respect each other more. Police officers have to respect the citizens, and the citizens have to respect the police officers. My first question to a citizen is, first off, when do you listen to the police officer? Okay? Once you get to that part and understand that they're, they're, they're doing a job, I would suggest you would listen to them first or do what they say. Once we do that part, then the rest is up to the police officer. The police officer has to learn how to respect that citizen. And I mean, with a personal experience too, I've had that, where an officer really talks down to you like you're not a person, and that would really demean you. So, I would talk to the chief and chief of police, colleague, which I think we got again, the best chief of police around, okay? By no means, by all means, he's just the greatest guy you can meet. But, and I know he loves to communicate. He's a man of God, and I know this, and I know he loves the city. And I know, when you, if you sit down and talk to him, and you, and you bring reason to the game, and you bring things that are concerns to you, I know he'll come up with an answer for it. That's his police department. So, my part would be to get that, bring those groups together. We already have groups out there right now that we meet with, I mean, that the, a police department meets with right now, and to just get a focus on the, on the, on the city.
Mr. Randall, your time has expired. Okay, thank you. All right. Jeanette Wiley is the next to respond to the question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Yes, I would like that, please.
Okay. Racial equity in law enforcement has become a concern across the country. Do you feel that this is an issue in Vacaville? If so, how would you address it? And how would you work to bring diverse groups together to build a more united Vacaville?
All right, thank you very much. Jeanette Wiley, District 6. I do feel like racism is a reality everywhere, and it is also a reality in Vacaville. Do I experience it? Not really, very much, but I do believe that a lot of people in Vacaville do, and that's why they've been calling into the city council meetings for the past several months to say, "We had a town hall, but we won't really listen to, so please listen to us." So, you can't say, "Oh, it doesn't exist in Vacaville," because we say it doesn't exist in Vacaville, when there are a large segment of people that really feel unheard. And I totally feel that people of color are never sure how a simple incident can change quickly, when we have seen that so much across the country. And again, people calling into the city council have been talking about incidents that happen here. I know there's two sides to every story, but we need to hear both sides, and they need to talk and really listen. It would also help to have like an independent auditor look at the Vacaville police records. How many have been people of color? How many incidents are happening that, you know, turns out to be nothing? And just have someone that's independent meet with both sides and try to have a resolution. The town hall meeting was a great idea and a great plan, but when a lot of people didn't feel listened to, it didn't solve the problem, so more conversation and dialogue needs to happen. We need to continue the conversation and try to find a way to really listen to the people and make a difference. So, that's it.
Thank you. Topak Chastain, it's your turn.
Thank you very much. I'm going to speak clearly and slowly into the phone. I hope you can hear me. Thumbs up? Am I coming? Topak Chastain for City Council, District 6. I don't quite understand the question, being racial equity. I don't quite understand the question, being racial equity. If we're talking about racially equality, I think is what we're meaning to talk about here. But if we're talking about equity, I'm not sure that makes sense to me, the question. But I'm going to go and answer the question as if it's asking racial equality here in town. So we do have issues with equality. I mean, my, what my observation is, is there are locations across the United States that have chiefs of police that are of different ethnicities, different ethnic numbers in different police departments. And I don't believe that that necessarily is what causes the racism. I believe it's a cultural kind of a situation. I think that we're experiencing a racial inequality behavior in our police department. And it's a cultural issue. And it's not just coming from the police department, it's coming from their leadership. Leadership, the city council, the mayor, it's the city manager, it is the chief of police, it is their sergeants, their lieutenants, and their officers. So to have a cultural change, that comes from every aspect of the city. Starts with, starts somewhere, should start with the council. The council shouldn't put up with or tolerate any type of racial behavior whatsoever against any gender, ethnicity at all. And if people are crying out in the city that there's a problem, that needs to not just be listened to, it needs to be acted on. And people need to be shown what is being done as moving us forward, as the city that we need to move forward. But so just giving lip service isn't going to do anything. We need to actually be sincere and actually show change is what we need to do. And that can be done. Cultural thing. I worked there for 29 years. Play with the culture's like. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question also has some real currency in Vacaville. And it deals with fire. The order of speakers will be Jeanette Wiley and then Tepak Chastain and Thomas Randall. So the question is, the city of Vacaville and neighboring communities recently experienced a fire emergency. And boy, is that an understatement. From your perspective, describe the aspects of the response that worked well and the areas in need of improvement for dealing with future fire threats. We'll begin with Jeanette Wiley.
Right. During the recent evacuation, a lot of the fire issues were in North Vacaville. And there they had total devastation. But District Six also had evacuations because they were not sure what was going to happen down here. So there was a good response from here and in the north part of town when I knew that the police were knocking at the doors and trying to get people out of their homes. Several of my friends were evacuated by people physically saying, come, you need to go now. The issue that happened with the fires here, we got something on our phone that said the evacuation's orders might be coming, go to this site. And when we went to that site, nothing came up. And so I talked to my son about it and he said, well, it was because everyone was trying to go there at that time. It just clogged the system. So like an hour later, I went to that same email and went to that site and it worked. So there is an issue that we need to work on. Try, if you're notifying a lot of people at once, how do you have the capability to do that? The other issue when we evacuated here in South Vacaville, as I said, we're almost all houses, very few businesses. And when Peabody was closed going south and Interstate 80 was closed going west, we could only go east or north. And really, there's only one way out, which was Nut Tree. So while people were evacuating in my neighborhood, the streets were clogged because people couldn't get there. And my friend called an hour later and said, I can't, I'm still 10 minutes from home, but it was an hour later. So it was really hard with the notification and the streets. But I do feel like our firefighters and first responders worked really, really hard, doing their best in a difficult situation.
Okay, thank you. And then the next responder will be Tepak Chastain.
Hello, Tepak Chastain for District Six. Yeah, the fires were awful. It was a, if you ask, go to degree. What worked great was, yeah, the surrounding agencies, San Francisco, Sacramento, Napa, Cochacosta County. They all came in and are firefighters. They all saved Vacaville. They literally saved Vacaville. We, the fires were widespread. We had, with the LNU fire, we had the hills burning on us to the west. And Travis was on fire at the same time and got evacuated. So many different fires were around and it was awful. The issues that failed were, as Mr. Wiley was referring to, it's the reverse 911 system. I helped put this system in. It's something they've been working on for a while now. The reverse 911 system was not utilized correctly. The PIO for the city of Vacaville recently retired Mark Mesafaro. He was a great guy. It wasn't, the word wouldn't have went out as horribly if he was still here. We had the fire chief who was assigned to be the interim PIO. He couldn't be focusing on fighting the fire and getting the word out to people. That should never have been tasked to him. The city manager should have taken care of that ahead of time. And that should have been something done with the Emergency Operations Center, which is another place that I helped put together, Emergency Operations Center. So what my proposal is, is that they scream out of the Emergency Operations Center when we have an emergency here in town, we're not going to do anything about IAD and the bottlenecking. Every time there's something that happens on IAD, Vacaville backs up. Vacaville comes to the gridlock and there's craziness here in town. What we need is good communication so we don't cause panic, so we don't trample each other trying to get across town. That's what we're lacking. Communication, leadership, accountability. We all are feeling it. That's why, that's why so many people are in District Six. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Randall, it's your chance.
All right, Thomas Randall, District Six. I think the fire department did the best job that they can and they were great. In my district in particular, District Six, we did have a bottleneck. I'm in the newer development down there and Vanden Road was socked in. I had two, I have two problems. One is it took me 30 minutes to get from one block from Brandon to my house. It took me 30 minutes to get that, just one block. That shouldn't be. I think because of where we are now and everything's new and everybody's running around, I think there should be going forward, a plan. And my plan that I would suggest is a fly road plan. Send everybody out in the neighborhood down Fly Road. That will ease up a lot of the congestion in the neighborhood so people can think. I think if we get them all down Fly Road and then you could come back from there. Because you could get to Sacramento, whatever you, wherever you want to go, down Fly Road. You'd see a lot of cars down there. Then our neighborhoods wouldn't be congested and we'll have people out of the neighborhoods. I did not get a notification, so I still have a question on that. I was going home. Everybody, I just found out two Sundays ago that my neighborhood was evacuated. Two Sundays ago, that's after the fire. I was going home, went home and talked to neighbors and neighbors says, hey, our neighborhood was evacuated. I was like, really? I had no idea. So I worked on how we could communicate that better over cell phones because everybody's not sitting home waiting on a police officer to knock on the door. I wasn't, my wife wasn't. So I was with, one, getting out, getting that bottleneck taken care of. And two, getting the location better.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. The next question in the order of answering will be Tepak Chastain and Thomas Randall and then Jeanette Wiley. And there are social issues in Vacaville. Not surprisingly, they're all over our country. And two of them are homelessness and food insecurity. Two areas of vital concern in Vacaville. How would you address these specific needs in your community?
I'm sorry, what kind of insecurity?
Food, food insecurity.
Food insecurity, okay, thank you very much. Yeah, so the homeless issue in town. So I was just at the Transit Center speaking to some people that were homeless here in town. You know, the city's response right now to people not having a place to go to the bathroom over at the Transit Center is the doors locked at the bathrooms in the Transit Center. So the city, the city isn't actually making any accommodations for individuals to take care of personal hygiene and needs at all. So if they, normally, so I used to work at the community centers quite a bit doing IT stuff. And they would use the bathrooms there and they would get kicked out for using the bathrooms there. So the number one, the city needs to be able to provide places for these individuals who have nowhere else to use the restroom or do hygiene stuff, to take care of hygiene stuff. It's humane. The food issue. In 2022, California passed an initiative that all stores in town, in any place in California, when they call their food, they actually have to give it to the community for them to be able to put out to the people who need it. So Vacaville Fish used to be a place that would give people, and I'm sorry, I can't see the timer anymore either. But Vacaville Fish used to give food to the community. That was great, you know, the storehouse does, thank you, sir. I didn't look there on it, but I'll keep it brief anyway. So there are resources for individuals to get food. I've been able to find myself recently. And I tell you, I speak with homeless people. And is that it? Or was that a call coming in? Yeah, it's an issue and there are easy viable solutions, you guys. There really are.
You have 14 more seconds, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you very much. That's fine. Thank you.
I will go ahead and, oh, wait, I don't know if I can do that. Yes, I can.
I've got a timer, Julie. I've got it set up, Julie. Go ahead. Two minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, can I hear if there's something else in there? About 14 seconds? Hey, so HUD, you know, HUD has some money, the Housing Department has some money that they're going to be providing for helping these guys. It's not enough. It's not enough. I'm going to tell you that right now. It's not enough. It's only going to help a little bit. The houses that they got planned, it's just the beginning of what Vacaville needs.
Okay, thank you. Thomas Randall, you have two minutes.
I, Thomas Randall, I feel the homeless situation is, I've talked to a lot of homeless people. Know a lot of them that I speak to on a daily basis. And a lot of them want to be where they are. Because a lot of things that the city's providing, they don't want to take advantage of it. And I don't think we could do much about that. I've been trying to figure out how do you combat that? And I don't know that answer yet because it's maybe the individuals want to get something done. Okay, I worked with my food ministry at First Baptist Church. And we, we put shout outs for food all the time. We get a lot of food in and I volunteer and we give it out. And I think the communication and where the food is available is a very important thing. I don't know if that's getting out there that the food is available for people. We could, we at First Baptist could accept a lot more people. We really want a lot more people to come. And that's for people that are homeless, that people that are not homeless, for the elderly. Just come to First Baptist and clean us out of food. We want to give everybody food. And they do have other food ministries around, and I think that's a beautiful thing. And hopefully, everybody can get fed at least. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Yeah, Niles, if you can keep, find a place where it's visible and stabilize it. We keep seeing a white screen for the timer.
Yeah, no, I haven't figured out how to switch that, but.
Okay, you can fix it while I'm giving the next question.
I haven't answered my question on that yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for jumping in. Okay, Jeanette Wiley.
I just don't know how, so is he starting the timers or the nil show me?
I'm starting, I'm starting it.
Okay, great, great. All right, so I'm talking a little bit about homelessness and a little bit about food insecurity. And both of those are major issues across the nation and also here in Vacaville. And I'm afraid to say they're only going to get worse with the COVID-19 and more and more people, you know, losing pay and being out of, they're out of money. I do feel like the homeless is an issue that you can't just say, oh, here, here, do this and you're, you're no longer homeless. You have to really look at the whole person. And I think we need to have counseling and mental health services available for them. And we do have, our police program has a community response unit and that should be helpful. We just need to continue to work with people and try to get them into a situation where they can be successful. And you really have to get housing first and then get social services to go with them. And to keep data on who are the people that are always knee out on the street and how you can try to meet their needs. For as far as the food insecurity goes, there are a lot of programs in Vacaville for both homeless and the people that are hungry. So we need to kind of coordinate those programs and see who's doing what. So I do usually work at Epiphany Church on Friday night when my church, our church serves meals on Friday and, once a month. And then tomorrow, I'm going to work at the food bank. So there are quite a few programs. I just think people aren't always aware of where they are or what they are. Or, you know, they might not have transportation to get to that place. And the city council generally has been talking about, you know, senior meals. And then we have meals on wheels, so people need to coordinate things together. So basically organize what the programs are available and let people know so that it can be most efficiently used.
Thank you. Are people able to see the timer?
Not very well.
Disappearing for me. Niles, can you just get it angled so that we can see it? It's all I see is a white green.
The closer it is to your screen, the better it is. When it's farther away, it's harder to see. But if you put it right next, right in front of the screen, it makes it better.
I know, the problem is it's, it's, give me a second.
Okay, well, we'll start on the next.
Yeah, let me start it.
Okay, I'm going to ask the next question and give the order of speakers. And here's a little interesting one about cannabis. And cannabis dispensaries are a potential but controversial revenue source for cities. What are your views on the sale and cultivation of cannabis within Vacaville's city limits? And in your answer, please state your position on Vacaville's ballot Measure V, the proposed general tax on cannabis and hemp businesses. And the order of speaking will be Thomas Randall, Jeanette Wiley, and Tepak Chastain. So we can begin with Thomas Randall.
Okay, Thomas Randall. Measure V, I think, is a good thing for us only because it's going to go to the question in a Baptist way. But what happens is, it's already state ordered. So we are going to have to address this tax-wise. And the thing that we have to be careful for us is black market. We can't tax people too much or we're going to lose the people that want to drive, want the cannabis is going to go to the black market. And we can't tax it too little because us as a city won't make the revenue. This is a fact. So it's nothing that we have to kind of elaborate on whether it could be or should be here, it's going to come here. That's already decided. How, Measure V, how we need to tax it. And on the city council, I think as we negotiate it, I think we will come up with a tax that's applicable to Vacaville. I also think that our law enforcement has to be ready to enforce the law with this so it doesn't get out of hand. I don't think we have to read the will as far as that's concerned. I think there's already tests that's been proven to work in other cities. And we should just duplicate that. We could always get better. I'm not saying anything about that. But as long as we keep the law enforcement part of it under control, I think with Measure V. But long as we keep the law enforcement part of it under control, I think this uh, measure V, this uh, cannabis thing will work. And if it gets out of hand, I think we could, we, we have a way of shutting it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Jeanette Wiley.
Um, I am in favor of measure V. I feel like a lot of the surrounding cities are having um, revenue coming in through cannabis. And our Vacaville residents are getting cannabis other places or having to go other places for their jobs with the cannabis industry. So in my walks and talks with area residents, I've seen really interesting. A younger man was asking me specifically about what my position was on this. Because he was a business owner of cannabis distribution. And he said he has to go to Oakland for his business. And he also has um, seventy employees. And I asked how many of those were in Vacaville and he said quite a few of them. So if we want to have more uh, business, then people wouldn't have to drive to Oakland. Then this week, when I was walking neighborhoods, I talked to an older gentleman and his first question was, tell me, what do you think about this cannabis? We need to get medical marijuana and I can't get the medical marijuana that I need here without having to go elsewhere. So it's been kind of interesting to hear it come from two uh, different perspectives, just, you know, talking to a few neighbors. I do feel like other cities are ahead of us in having already enacted several laws and rules around this. So we can certainly see from their experience what, what is working or what's successful. To see what we need to do to tweak it so that we have, you know, the best possible rules going in. So that's my answer.
Thank you. And the next speaker. Oh, no, yeah, the next speaker is Topak Chastain.
Thank you, thank you very much, Topak Chastain for District Six. Yeah, that's an excellent question. Thank you for the timer. It um, yes, there are people across the spectrum and ages that are using the medicinal aspects of cannabis. It's not a question whether or not it should be here. As Mr. Randall stated, it's already here. People are going outside of our community for it. I think this is a tricky question. We, we're missing, we're missing the real question here. And I think what's going on, just like when measure M was taking place, it was whether or not measure M should actually go on. And then everybody said yes, and what happened was we didn't realize that what we should have been focusing on is exactly specifically where the tax revenue should be going to help. And then it gets dumped into general fund and it gets spent on stuff that really um, with lack of accountability. So I think it's a tricky argument. Um, it's not, yeah, I, I support the measure V. It um, sure, but what I think we need to take a really close look at is where those funds are going and how they're gonna be spent once we start taxing people on it. So um, how about we apply those taxes to, to some things that need the help? Um, education, you know, I'm not gonna say law enforcement, I'm gonna say specific. How about, this talks about homeless issues, why don't we use it to help the community that has the most, the most problems and has least representation? Why don't we, why don't we, we support that? So that's what I think needs to be scrutinized is where the tax base is gonna go so that it doesn't fall into the deep pocket of the general fund and just get used for um, for raises for directors and, and managers and things. So that's, so that's where I'd like to say yes. Let's, let's clean places this old pot into town and let's make sure that we spend the money wisely when we, when we do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Thomas Randall, your response?
I was first.
He answered that first. Now we're ready for the next question.
Oh, you're right. I'm glad you guys are on the ball. This is um, a testament to your capability as candidates and perhaps future council members. I'm not running. All right, um, the, the community does not need to have to worry about that. We have um, across the country, economic um, challenges facing all the, all the communities. And in Vacaville, um, the question is, what is your vision for the economic growth of the city of Vacaville? And what factors need to be considered to improve the economic vitality of the city? And the order of question of answers is Jeanette Wiley, Topak Chastain, and Thomas Randall. Jeanette.
Get me right back in there. All right, so when I was answering the fiscal question, I talked about economics because you have to have a strong economy in order to uh, be fiscally sound. And we do have a large number of small businesses in Vacaville. And they are having a lot of issues right now with the um, you know, the COVID and having to be closed for many times. We also have large businesses. So you have to work with the businesses so that they can be successful in what they're doing. So one of the things that you might be able to do is, you know, look at the fees during a time where there's issues. We also need to um, see what we can do to attract businesses. A lot of our Vacaville residents commute outside of the city. So we need to have more businesses so people do not have to commute and we can have that revenue stream as well. I do feel like um, we are working toward that end. But we don't always have a lot of new businesses coming in. So that is one thing that we should continue to do. One thing you could do is like do zoning ahead of time so people know what things are zoned for. So if a new business wants to come in, they know this area is zoned for this. So it's, you don't have to do that business zone, zoning decisions after a business has been um, selected. Particularly in the District Six, there's not a lot of businesses that are real close that are shopping. So I think developing that area around the golf course to have some businesses there and shopping and then some maybe mixed use housing things is a good plan for um, the Vacaville area near the, near the golf course. So there's a lot of things to do and I would be new in the city council. So I would be interested in hearing a lot of other ideas as well.
Thank you. And the, the next speaker is Topak Chastain.
So ec, economic um, stability here in town. So we talked about how the city's planning on um, on going full bi, bio tech kinda city. And that's great if it actually comes to fruition. There needs to be a backup plan um, that, that will keep the city from um, basically going under financially when um, when something like COVID happens. Yeah, the, the COVID issue really kind of frustrates me with what's going on with the business around town. The, the place that I've seen that hasn't lost any business or shut down at all has been Walmart. Walmart has been allowed to open this entire time and, and without, without even a flinch uh, from, and, and so. My question has been over and over, Walmart can do it, why can't any of the other businesses? So why don't we just apply the same regulations and guidelines that Walmart's using? Since nobody, since nobody up in the governor's position is willing to touch Walmart, um, unless them stay open. Why don't we just stand up for our businesses as a city and say, hey, look, Walmart gets to do it, we let these guys do it too. We use their, their same, their same standards and guidelines. If, it's either that or Walmart is infecting the world with COVID. You know, I mean, I, I, that's what I have to say is that, you know, Walmart is doing it. We, we need to allow all the other businesses to do it, just like we're letting Walmart do it. And the city needs to put behind the businesses. As far as looking for the future, um, yeah, Leisure Town is a mess. It's a fire, it's a fire hazard and it's a shame for letting that happen. Um, but no, um, typically to the, the issue of financial stability in our town, we need to um, have some diversity here and it needs to go beyond just um, biomedical. Years ago, we had basic onion processing plant. And then we had the, the um, oh, I can't see the, the timer, so I think I'm down to one second now. Anyway, so, so Jim, you know, we, we put our eggs in one basket, it, it really doesn't work for us. We need diversity and we need to stand behind our businesses. And that is your council leadership that needs to do it. I commend Mr. Sullivan for over and over trying to champion that too.
Thank you. And Thomas Randall.
Thomas Randall. I think small businesses, uh, Topak said it right about big, big uh, big uh, big box stores. They don't have the uh, capacity to, to weather through a storm for the most part. Small businesses just don't have that uh, limit. Um, so as far as small businesses are concerned, I think there should be more incentives from the city to uh, to, to have small businesses come to uh, Vacaville area, especially like our downtown also. To, to get that built up. I, I think that's been in the mix for a long time to build up downtown. And I think we're gonna be going in the right direction. Uh, small businesses, I'm getting small businesses also in District Six. Um, I don't know the rules on what happened with the um, Magnolia Park. But I hope that we're gonna put uh, some kind of small businesses in, in that lot that uh, houses. Maybe I'm behind that eight million model. But I'm hoping that comes to uh, uh, a decision where we could have something in that area. We are becoming out in the uh, the boonies and because of that, people don't, are, are gonna wanna come all the way into Vacaville to get things done. I think we should uh, give incentives on, on, on making um, making that area, our area, District Six more valuable. I mean valuable for people that wanna uh, that, that, that's already there and they wanna shop in our area. So I think that should be on the plan. If I uh, am chosen for city council, I'm gonna make sure we get some things out there to make Vacaville, uh, District Six uh, more valuable. And as a hold, I think Vacaville should give more incentives than, thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, moving from the economic issues of Vacaville to the budgetary issues. Um, this is a complex question. And if, if folks would like to take three minutes, I'm going to grant three minutes. And so the timed keeper can be aware of that. You don't have to use the full three minutes, but feel um, that you have that opportunity. So the, the order of responders will be Topak Chastain, Thomas Randall, and Jeanette Wiley. The question is, considering so many community needs but finite resources, what would be your top budget priorities? And then, please address the potential budget shortfall due to lost revenues and increased costs related to the pandemic. And then, this was a hard one. Please also address the unfunded employee pension obligation. So there are three parts of what are your top budget priorities with limited resources? How are you gonna compensate for the likely shortfall? Um, budget shortfall due to the pandemic? And then the reality of an unfunded employee pension obligation. And I can repeat that um, right before each of you speaks. So we're beginning with Topak Chastain.
Thank you for that question, Topak Chastain from, for District Six. Yeah, those are really great questions. Boy, three minutes, we could just go on and on about that. First, I'd like to talk about what an unfunded liability is. That's a tricky question for everybody. Um, I'm gonna give a really straightforward example. So we got one city manager that works here in town and they make like $200,000 a year. But in the course of the time that I worked for the city, we've had like five city managers retire. We're paying for all five retirements consecutively and, and the, the thing is, what happens is the one city manager that's working now, the way it works in government, where's the term unfunded liability comes in. The money to pay the retirements for the other peoples comes from the person that's working now. They pay CalPERS. So that's basically what causes unfunded liabilities. Is when um, you get a bunch of people that retired in a position and just one position trying to pay into those five retirements. The, the longer people live and all that kinda good stuff is what causes this stuff to go on. So my example is exactly what's taking place here in town. You got a million dollars in unfunded liabilities from one position. So this, this is why um, employee retention is key. It's absolutely crucial. Rather than a city manager working five years or six years and then retiring out and getting, you know, the retirement salary with all the medical benefits that go along with that here in town. Um, what we need to do is have individuals that stay in positions for a long period of time. Kinda like they used to. It didn't used to be an issue. So people were working in a position, they get a handshake up into a position and they retire out at the top of their pay, their pay salary. And, and you know, city manager and they cost the city a lot of money. So, so employee retention and, and not only that, weeding out the really bad managers that really are just retiring out after retiring out. It's um, it's a city culture thing. You got poor management, poor leadership and people wanna get out of there. So they do as early as possible and it just, it is a chain, it's a cycle. Um, so COVID-19, it's hit the city really hard. You know, our mayor, he, he wrote a letter to the governor asking for a, a unreal amount of money. And it's millions upon millions. I'd say it was like a billion dollars. It was a, an insane amount of money. We're not gonna get it. We're gonna be in trouble. We're living off our savings right now in town. We have a savings in Vacaville, it's the reserve fund and that's what we're living off of. And any household who's had to live off of that due COVID knows.
We, we lost the voice.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, we can.
Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. So I don't know if you caught any of that. So anyway, we're living off our savings and an unfunded liability happens when lots of people retire and one position is paying into that. It's a simple, it's a simple problem and concept. Employee retention is key and weeding out very poor management. And, and the management is such the culture that makes people wanna leave. I worked for the city for twenty-nine years and I started there working part-time. I worked for very little salary. I was happy to. I love the community. And you work in a community that you believe in, you're willing to work for a little bit, I'm mad at my, that's the job of a school servant and a teacher. You know, you love what you do. Is it, is it time over? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next um, responder is Thomas Randall.
Can I hear the three questions again, please?
I'd be happy to, to, to read it. There's basically three parts. Um, considering so many community needs but finite resources, what would be your top budget priorities? Then also address how you would deal with the likely budget shortfall because of the lost revenue and the increased costs associated with the pandemic. And then the third component of the budget is how are you going to address the unfunded employee pension obligation? You have three minutes.
That's a mouthful.
Right, and can you hold your phone close to your mouth so we pick up your answer?
Okay, can you hear me? Is that better?
That's better.
I'm gonna think that's good. Um, first off, the unfunded liability. That's a, that's a big uh, uh, chess game that we're playing here in Vacaville that if we don't get it corrected or get it on a better uh, level, we'll be another bell. Um, I don't believe in looking away from a problem or eat, uh, or eat, uh, kicking it down the road. I don't run my business like that. I don't kick it down the road and say, hey, this is what we gotta do. So with all the stakeholders, I, I would wanna sit down at the table and say, here's what we have. Show me what you don't want. Okay, everybody wants everything. The other, I, I understand that. Everybody wants everything that they can have and more. So my way of handling that is I'll sit down and I'll talk to people and negotiate what uh, what we wanna get rid of. If we don't uh, in, um, if we don't get more businesses to produce more revenue in uh, in Vacaville, then we won't be getting more revenue. I don't think we should, I don't think we can tax ourselves out of this uh, situation. Maybe that's an option, but that wouldn't be an option that I would wanna use. I, I think uh, the unfunded um, liabilities again, I have to really negotiate uh, with our um, unions and, and, and for our pension plans to see that, with the union. So I could see where we could give, where, how we could build this back up. Because unless we do all this together and not on the backs of the citizens of uh, of Vacaville, I don't think it's gonna happen. We, we're growing here and um, I think bringing jobs back here would be a good start. You know, making businesses more valuable back here would be a good start. Making uh, uh, Vacaville a more attractive city for more. Making uh uh Vacaville a more attractive city for more people to come and stop through. Because that traffic coming off of I-80 is huge to us and it's getting worse. But for businesses, it can look better if we give them more incentive to come off that freeway and spend their money in Vacaville. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our, I'm not forgetting you this time. Our last um response will be from Jeanette Wiley.
All right. When I was trying to weigh the pros and cons of running for City Council, I realized that this would be a difficult time to be on City Council. When you look at all these things, the unfunded liability, the problems with the pandemic, and trying to make economic decisions at a time when we're spending more than we're taking in, is not an easy time to be on the council. But I was on President of the Teachers Union in 2009 when we had the recession then and we had to work really hard to see how can we deal with this so we were not in a state takeover. And we did have to make some difficult decisions related to employees and programs so that we could continue to be a growing concern going forward. So I do feel like we can't say, oh, you know, public safety takes the biggest part of a budget, so we have to eliminate public safety. We need to have a safe and funded public safety program. But we can look within that program at some of the things like incentive pay and other things as well. Um, the other thing we can look at is the people, when they turn 65, currently don't have to go on Medicare, they continue on their private insurance. And that insurance is paid for by the city by almost 100%. They have been cutting it down in the last couple of years. It went to the city's share was 85% and the employees were 15%. But that's only for the new employees going coming forward. So we're still paying 100% for current employees and not and they don't go on Medicare at 65. So that would make a big difference without having to, you know, cut salaries or anything. Um, as far as the shortfall goes, you have to really look at the reorganization. The City Council did just have a big reorganization, but I'm not sure if it's really saved any money or just moved people around because some people were just promoted. And so it just is kind of odd the way they did their reorganization. I do feel like what we need to do to uh deal with the unfunded liability is to look at the total cost for programs also. And you you have to still offer services for the city. One thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is Measure M. The voters passed Measure M to have better parks, to have improved senior centers, but it's currently going to, you know, pensions and general fund. So people want to have parks and other amenities. So we need to find a way to provide that as well as as the other things. So I acknowledge this is a difficult problem. I wouldn't say I don't have any easy solutions, but it will take all of us working together, all six districts and the residents to find an an answer.
Okay, thank you. Um, we do have two questions from our YouTube audience and they're both related to how the city should help support the schools during this time of um uncertainty with COVID and uncertainty of how to get children back into school. So I'm I'm going to offer you two minutes each to maybe throw out some ideas there of how the city should be interacting with the schools to ensure that um the children of Vacaville are going to be safely schooled. So I will, let's see. Um, we will begin with Thomas Randall and then it will be Jeanette Wiley and then Tepac Chastain. So Thomas Randall, um, how about giving us some thoughts on how uh the city can help support the schools during this difficult time of COVID?
Thomas Randall, um, that the city has little to know um when in our district Travis Unified, New District, uh, we can't tell them what to do. But as far as uh City Council, what we could recommend, we could talk to the people and and that's an important part to be a voice. Uh, what what I would suggest is we we worked on stuff that we we're that's in our lane, which would be uh um like suicide, working with the parents with suicide, you know, trying to help them get some type of uh help as far as that. Um, economic wise, we could uh work with if it's a if it's a, what you call it, um, um, like section aid or people that need help. We should uh be able to find some funds to help out in that way. Give them more money uh for food. Um, but other than that, as a as a uh City Councilman, I'm not totally sure all that would goes into that. So I would have to find out and then what I find out uh from listening to what like the question right here, I'd be looking for the answer and I would be uh hell bent to get to an answer. Thank you.
Okay, our next responder is Jeanette Wiley.
I have been a teacher at Travis for 22 years. I retired two years ago. And two of the schools for the Travis District are in District Six, Foxborough and Cambridge. I taught at both of those schools as well. But a lot of times people in Vacaville talk about the school district, the school district, because they really feel like Vacaville Schools is the only school district in Vacaville. So that is one thing I would like to work with to make sure that everyone is aware that while Vacaville has their schools, the Travis District, Cambridge and Foxborough also need support as well. Um, so an example of that is I think that the TEAF program is a really great after-school and before-school program that the city provides for a cost. And, you know, I had my kids in it when I was teaching as well. And they have a ongoing programs during the day now at a couple of the Vacaville Schools. And so they provide, you know, help with homework and a place for parents, kids to go when their parents have to work, which is excellent. I'm so glad they've provided that. But there's not one for Cambridge or Foxborough. And I did just ask and they said, well, you know, no one was interested. So I feel like a lot of Cambridge parents could take advantage of that. So I really feel like, as Randall said, there's not a lot of um things that the City Council can do, but they can just help with better communication so that there's a an understanding of the school district and the City Council. Because I also think that the Vacaville Schools doesn't have a great relationship with the City Council as well. I feel like the City Council can be supportive of the teachers who are working really, really hard to do this distance learning and supportive of the parents who are working really, really hard to support their children and and do all this. And also the students, because this is not really what school is supposed to be. So better communication and just working together. And and if we find out what the school needs, that would be helpful.
Thank you. And then we have uh Tepac Chastain responding as well.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Are you, that my son's a 2020 graduate. Um, he went, he went to Cambridge School too. And um, so can you guys hear me okay? Yes, okay. So so, yeah, it's a horrible disconnect that our that our leadership in government has between the Travis School District. It's not okay. That's something that needs to change. Um, I was on the the Advisory Committee for Travis School District. There needs to be a a connect between the City Council and government here and the school district. Um, so, you know, and then the Travis School District, besides the Vacaville School District, two different school districts. But, you know, the Vacaville School District gets the um gets way more attention, just as this Wiley said, than Travis School District. There's counselors that are provided from the city, there's fees that are provided from the city, um, all of these different benefits that are provided from the city. But yet and yet the um the kids that go out to Vanden or or um or Golden West, they live in Vacaville. So there needs to be a a lot more representation for those kids. So what would I do as far as COVID-19 is concerned? Um, if those kids come back infected into the household here in Vacaville, they infect all Vacaville. So there needs to be a connect between the two. But hey, I I would love to sit on the board, on the on the board with the Advisory Committee and with the Travis School District Board to work with them on on how we're gonna organize that to have kids still in school safe. And and so they're safe for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna give you each one minute for a softball question and then we'll go to closing statements, which will be three minutes. And um, this, oh, this last question, I have to re- figure out the order now. Um. I think it is. Um. Is it Tepac? No.
Nope.
I've lost my order here because I inserted a question. Okay, we're gonna go alphabetically. Um, we'll begin with uh Tepac Chastain and then we'll go to Thomas Randall and then Jeanette Wiley. And the question is, what are the foundational strengths of Vacaville that you intend to build upon? One minute.
My goodness, that is an excellent question. Let's talk about what Vacaville does right. Um, Vacaville's foundational strength are its community. The people in Vacaville are absolutely wonderful. Uh, you know, we pull together when we need to. That um it's a great place to live in. How would I pull on that strength? Just like what I'm doing now, I go around talking to people, figuring out what we need to do and getting everybody engaged and and then taking action. That's um, so I won't overuse my minute. But yeah, what what do I love about Vacaville the most is the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Thomas Randall.
I also think Vacaville is the best community around. And um the way that I would uh, we're more of a family community and I wanna keep it that way. And the way I would uh keep it that way is we want a better communicator, guidance, uh, education and action plan. I I don't want people to go around not knowing what our student is capable of and what our student is capable of doing. Thank you.
Okay, and Jeanette?
I was.
Jeanette Wiley, sorry.
Pardon me? Okay.
I'm supposed to say your full name, Jeanette Wiley.
All right, all right, here we go. I do feel like Vacaville is a good place to be. And in going around and talking to people, when I say, you know, do you have issues with the city? Most of them say, oh, no, I like it here. I came from Vacaville, I came from Fairfield, I came from Vallejo. No, we really like it here. So I think people are genuinely pretty happy with being in Vacaville. There are activities, wouldn't it's not COVID, like the Emiraman on Main and all the hometown kind of feel. Um, I do like the fact that we have a pretty big age range. There's singles, there's young families, there's, you know, the leisure town, older seniors like me now. And um so we have a broad range of people that way. And by and large, it's a pretty safe city. There are issues that come up once in a while, but it's a safe place to be in California.
Okay, excellent. Now we're going to um shift to closing statements and each candidate has three minutes. And we're going to do this in the reverse order of the opening statements. And so uh Thomas Randall will go first, followed by Tepac Chastain, concluding with Jeanette Wiley. And I would encourage you to include in your statement how constituents can get hold of you, whether you have a website or a phone number, uh, some way that um people can reach out to you, just as you're reaching out to them today. So we will begin with uh Thomas Randall.
Okay, I'm Thomas Randall, District Six, candidate for uh City Council. And you can get ahold of me at info dot Thomas Randall dot com. And um as a business owner, husband, homeowner and a civic leader, I think I'm uniquely positioned to understand the significant challenges facing Vacaville during these uncertain times. And help Vacaville overcome by listening to and understanding all perspectives. Whoever hear me talk, that's what I wanna do. I wanna listen and understand what people want and then make an action plan. And we'll meet those, at Vacaville civilians, we'll meet those challenges uh head-on with a with a a scalable solution to allow our great city of Vacaville to continue forward. Vacaville, like we mentioned before, is a wonderful place to live. I don't think any candidate out there is trying to destroy that. But the experienced candidate, and I don't mean who who's endorsed candidate candidate, I mean the experienced candidate should be the one that lead us forward because we we are in challenging times. We we we're in times where if you haven't been tested, here's the time you'll be tested at City Council. And I think with my experience of being in leadership, being in a civic leader, being around the county, speaking for the county, speaking around all the states, I think I could bring that to Vacaville and and use it as my City Council. I think I'm a great communicator and I do uh think that I should be selected as City Council Vacaville. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so now we have Tepac Chastain, three minutes.
Hello, Tepac Chastain, running for City Council, District Six. Thank you, everybody who's out there watching this evening. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Women's League of Voters. Thank you so much for hosting us for us tonight. Um, this is absolutely wonderful what you're doing for us. Thank you, Mrs. Chapman. I really appreciate your your moderating for us. And Mrs. Chapman, absolutely a pleasure and an honor, guys. Um, so so I, you know, I worked for the city for 29 years and and I worked in every department and sat in so many meetings. I sat there right at the city manager's conference table and in so many countless chamber of uh chamber meetings and everything from planning commission to to the to um every aspect of government. I built the dispatch center twice, the UFC Center, all the different communications you see around town, the wastewater treatment plant, every aspect of this city I have worked in and on. And I can tell you, it's having some problems right now. It's having some serious problems right now. It hasn't hit rock bottom yet and and that's where I think that we we um we can make a change right now. It's a two-year position for District Six. So this is a great time for people to go and put somebody in office and see if they're actually, they can deliver and they can do what Vacaville needs them to do. And if not, place them with somebody else. So whoever gets this position, Mr. Randall or Mrs. Wiley or Mr. Beatty, um, you know, I, in two years, we're gonna have another opportunity, guys. So so I think that that's actually a very neat thing. That's a great thing, democracy in action. Um, we got some serious issues. We we have some civil liberty issues in town that are unreal. We have some issues with people appointing themselves, they're being appointed to positions that are unreal. They're actually embarrassing. Um, those need to be addressed and and now. And so what I'm asking people to do is to give me a a shot and prove what I what I've been saying. Um, you can go to my Facebook page, Tepac Chastain. It's a Facebook page, oh, where's my timer there? I've got 57 seconds. It's a Facebook page where I go and I post every single day about things going on in District Six specifically. And then I talk about things going on to the city. So what what the issues are that we face, I don't want it to all sound bad, but it but let's, you know, the City Council is there to fix problems and and address issues. And that's what I'm asking you to let me do for you. Um, everything from the streets to the sewers, to the water veins, to the communications, to the parks, they all could use some help. And I wish to help. Tepac Chastain, District Six, and Tepac Chastain on Facebook. You can email me at T A P A C H C H A S T A I N at gmail dot com or simply votechastain at gmail dot com. Thank you for your time tonight, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll conclude with Jeanette Wiley.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Wiley from District Six and I wanna thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight with the other candidates. And also thank you, League of Women Voters, for your other work with candidates across the county. Um, I'm eager to see a change in City Council and I think having seven members instead of five will be a good change. And I think when uh Vacaville District Six is successful, all other districts will also be successful, which will help Vacaville. I have a broad range of support. I have the support from current council members and from former council members. And I have support from teachers and neighbors and labor unions and elected leaders. And I have support from teachers and neighbors and labor unions and elected leaders. And I would like your support as well. Vacaville is a great place to be, but there's always room for improvement. And we want to listen to the residents and have fair and equal treatment. Vacaville needs to be fiscally responsible and I will work toward that end so that we can be a full-service city with parks and other amenities and use our Measure M money for, for what it was intended purpose. I also want to thank the viewers and the voters who are watching this tonight. You are the most important part of this process when you use your absentee ballot or vote at the polls. And I urge you to support Jeanette Wiley for District Six so that you can elect an independent thinker with experience, integrity and energy to serve District Six. And then go tell three other people that you know to also support Wiley. And you can look up my information at Wiley and it's W Y L I E, because oftentimes people spell W I. W Y L I E. Wileyfor, spelled out F O R, WileyforCityCouncil.com. And then with your support behind me, it can be Wiley for the win in November. Thank you very much.
Thank, I want to thank all the, the candidates for kind of enduring this Zoom version of a, with all its hiccups and problems of a candidate forum. I think all of you were wonderful sports hanging in there. And the voters now have a better idea of who you are and what ideas and and goals you represent. I'm going to turn this back over to Julie Hartford to give some concluding remarks for the League of Women Voters of Solano County.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, Leslie, for your moderating. Thank you, Sarah, who became kicked off the internet somehow and came back to, to work for us. For you viewers on YouTube Live and for those who watch this as a recording, there were many technical difficulties that went along with this evening, including a couple of our candidates who did not have audio. So they did have to participate visually through Zoom, but their voices actually came through over telephones that came through my home. And so trying to coordinate has been a challenge and I think we all came through. I would encourage you all to reach out to the candidates if you have more questions. And I would like to say that running for office is difficult. Serving in an elected office is difficult. And I would like to say that I admire people that have the willingness to try and the willingness to actually do these jobs. Sometimes it can be quite thankless and I appreciate you all for even coming this far. I would like to thank the audience for tuning in and those that watched the recorded event because it's so important to get to know your candidates. A virtual event like this takes a lot of planning. And once again, thank you, Leslie and Sarah. I'd also like to thank Niles Metters, who was the tech person for this event and tried to slip in and be the timer and tried to get messages to us via, via chat. I'd like to thank Sandy Curry, who helped make this possible, Danielle Kreider, Craig Patterson, Gail Vaughn, Rami Muth, Sarah Chapman. Oh, I said, I said you twice this time and I forgot to mention you at the beginning. I, I really apologize. And I'd like to remind our viewers that the recording of this forum will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Solano County's YouTube channel. Additionally, there will be a link to it on our website once we get that up. Please visit our website and feel free to shoot us an email giving us any feedback on this forum because we could certainly use it. I know that we all have our own little lists that we'll be sharing with each other later. The copyright for this forum belongs to the League of Women Voters of Solano County, which reserves all rights to the recording of this format. No portion of the contents of this format may be reproduced or otherwise used without prior written consent from the League of Women Voters. No portion of this recording may be used to promote one candidate or oppose another in any way. Additionally, no portion of this forum may be used to imply that the League of Women Voters endorses any candidate. If the recording of this forum is to be used, it must be used in its entirety. Thank you for watching and have a good evening.